Yeah, we can get started. Okay, call meeting to order. Uh, Kattine, roll call please.
Dr. Gortilino?
Here.
Mrs. Fano?
Here.
Mr. Palmer? Mr. Petrazzino? Mr. Rappaport?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Here.
Mr. Daughtry? Dr. Modrak?
Here.
Mr. Brookhauser?
Here.
Ms. Patel?
Here.
Right, so pledge allegiance?
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands on the nation under God indivisible and in the nation of God's law.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Mont- The Montville Township Board of Education provided a public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location that was posted at the Montville Township Municipal Building, all Montville Public Schools, the Montville Public Library, the Montville Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the district website, and advertised in the Daily Record, and the Montville Tap into, the board's official newspapers, on January fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, thank you. I think our microphones are very sensitive today. Uh, our high school representative report?
I hope everyone, oh, yeah, there. I hope everyone's, uh, night is going well. So, I'm gonna start off with the, uh, sports for the high school. The boys' basketball team is eight and two and won the Paquonic Holiday Tournament over winter break. The girls' basketball team is five and six and had a great come-from-behind win against Mendham after the break. The boys' bowling team is seven and four. The boys' swimming team is two and two with two straight wins over Sparta and Parsippany. The girls' swimming team is one and three. The wrestling team has been on a roll and are eleven and oh. The hockey team is four and seven with their most recent win being a six to oh sho- six to zero shutout against Madison. Now, moving on to the school-related subjects. On December nineteenth, the math club recognized Cipio Han and Curtis Wang for their outstanding performance in the New Jersey Math League. This doing- this distinguished the club as one of the top in the New- in New Jersey. After Contest Two, Cipio and Curtis have each achieved an impressive cumulative score of ten, making them two of the highest-scoring students in the state. On December twentieth, talented students James Halpern and Logan Rendiro earned a third place in state-level Sing to Learn Chinese contest organized by the New Jersey Chinese Teachers Association. This prestigious contest celebrates creativity, enthusiasm, and dedication in learning Chinese through music. Anyone interested in boys' tennis had a meeting on Wednesday, January tenth, to discuss different aspects about the season. And on January fourteenth, the annual Chinese New Year showcase was held in the cafeteria from six to eight P. M. The whole event was a great success. Now, I'm gonna pass it to Gia for the present.
Hosa competed at the national, at the Northern Regional Competition, and Montville had two winners. Giovanni Geraldino won fifth in his event, which was Pathophysiology, and Sanvi Yalamanchili won fifth in Dental Science. Currently, cap and gowns for senior graduat- graduation are available to be purchased, and they need to be ordered by February first. For the future, senior Brian Lee successfully auditioned and placed into the New Jersey Region One Wind Ensemble. His performance will be on January twenty-sixth at Parsippany Hills High School at three P. M. Midterms begin this Friday and will go on until next Wednesday. After, the third marking period will begin on January thirty-first. Eighth-grade orientation is on February fifth at the high school, and it begins at six-thirty and lasts about two hours. On February tenth, MTHS will be hosting the ne- the next Share the Keys program. That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, super, uh, should we do superintendent's reports? Would you like to do some remarks?
Yes, uh, we have some wonderful presentations tonight. We have a student receiving their Eagle Scout Award, and we have teachers and professionals being recognized tonight, and the principals will begin with talking them, talking about these wonderful accomplishments, and they're very well-deserved. So, I'll let all their recognition speak for themselves, but, uh, it's a great night to be here to recognize the wonderful things going on in the district.
Okay, then I will go ahead and do the Eagle Scout recognition first. Okay, back that way. Okay, so, tonight is Antonio Gustaitis. Uh, our Eagle Scout, uh, we have a resolution and a plaque for him. Um, so, the resolution reads, whereas Antonio Gustaitis is a resident of Montville Township, and whereas Antonio Gustaitis has attended Montville Township Schools for twelve years, and whereas Antonio Gustaitis has achieved Eagle Scout ranking, and whereas Antonio Gustaitis has completed his Eagle Scout ranking by building seven wooden benches and installing them between the parking lot and basketball blacktop to create a new outdoor classroom where students can go to learn outside and play around during recess. Antonio has had the entire area mulched. The other aspect of the project was cleaning up the slightly overgrown basketball court, repainting the backboards and rims, adding new nets to the hoops, and adding pole mats to protect children from injury by running into them. Antonio ran a birdhouse sale fundraiser to account for some of the project's backing, but also had major donations from the Woodmont PTA, Friendly Tree, Dan Cuomo and Sons, and Seven Scoops and Sips. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Montville Township Board of Education on this twenty-first day of January two thousand twenty-five recognizes and applauds the innovation, creativity, and hard work of Antonio Gustaitis for the honor and distinction he has brought to his family, school, and community in reaching his goal as Eagle Scout. I would ask for him to come forward, and we'll present the plaque.
Hello? All right, so, my Eagle Scout project was at Woodmont Elementary School. It was a outdoor lunch area classroom, like, kind of a hybrid, and we built eight picnic benches that were designed as so students could eat lunch, students that had allergies, uh, both food allergies and grass allergies. We did the entire area full of stone instead of grass, so that way students would not get allergic reactions from the grass. And the area is effective as both an outdoor classroom for teachers that wanna spend time outside with their students, as well as allowing students that have allergies to play outside with their friends and be able to spend time outside. So, uh, thank you all. Many of you participated, helped out with fundraising and stuff like that, so I'd like to thank all you for that, and I'd like to thank Mr. Esposito for allowing me to do this wonderful project. Thank you all.
So, we will correct that. Our deepest apologies to you and your family, and we'll, uh, we'll get back in touch with you about this. So sorry. Uh, moving on to the teachers, we're gonna start with Cedar Hill.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. I have the distinct honor of introducing, introducing to you two outstanding educators that call Cedar Hill their home. First, I have here Miss Elizabeth Weinberg, who is our Educational Specialist of the Year. She is a paraprofessional with us for her past three years. And over here, I have Casey Daniel, third-grade teacher, also with us for three years, and had, each of them have made such an impact in just a short amount of time that they've been here that they were acknowledged by their peers to be the outstanding educators that we have here, not only in Cedar Hill but in Montville Township. So, I am very blessed to have both of them working with me at Cedar Hill School. It makes my job so much easier, and I thank you both for what you do.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Jill Sisneros. I am the principal of Hildale, and today I have with me, um, Debbie Mancino is our Educational Services Professional. She has been at Hildale for twenty-three years, eight years in our BSI position. When, um, I asked around the building some things that describe Debbie, it, we heard things like organized, knowledgeable, and would save her dogs before people. Next, we have Mrs. Tracy Hansel, Teacher of the Year. She is a lifelong resident of Montville. She has been at Hildale for thirty-two years, uh, twenty of them in kindergarten, the past twenty. And when asked about Tracy, I heard things like dependable, calm, and thoughtful. And they are all those things, and I thank you for being so wonderful to our students at Hildale and being a huge part of our success. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gorman. Um, William Mason is very pleased and proud to announce that our Teacher of the Year is Mrs. Shell. Mrs. Shell has been at William Mason for twenty-plus years, and she eloquently reminded me the other day that apparently fifteen years ago she won the same award. And I was up here telling everyone how wonderful she was and what an outstanding teacher and how kind and empathetic she was. But apparently I didn't mean it because I didn't know her that well, she said. So, I would just echo those sentiments tonight and say that, Mrs. Shell, I actually mean it this time. Um, on behalf of everyone at William Mason, we are certainly proud of you, and, um, congratulations. Our Educational Services Professional is Mrs. Milan. Mrs. Milan, I've known for fifteen years as well, um, but I didn't make that same mistake fifteen years ago, so, um, we'd like to congratulate Mrs. Milan. She is our reading specialist, turned literacy coach, turned, um, ELA guru. So, we thank you for everything you do for our students, for our staff, and for our parents. Congratulations.
Unlike my more youthful colleagues, I need notes, sometimes signs of aging. So, tonight, we proudly honors our Teacher of the Year, our Educational Services Professional of the Year. Our Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Melissa Epstein, is a dedicated educator of fifteen years. She inspires her students in language arts and science. She connects with them, creates a classroom environment where every learner feels valued and supported. Her academic expertise shines through in her innovative lessons, which foster curiosity and critical thinking. She exemplifies what it means to be a teacher who not only imparts knowledge, but also builds lasting relationships. Our Educational Services Professional of the Year, Mrs. Alessa Dubre, is an extraordinary speech teacher who changes lives every day. For her, her work is more than a profession. It's truly a calling. She literally helps children find their voice, empowering them to express themselves with confidence and clarity. Through her patience, expertise, and unwavering dedication, Alessa gives her students the tools to overcome challenges and communicate their unique stories to their world. Her impact is profound, and her passion is inspiring. Please join us in honoring both of these very talented educators. Thank you.
It is a privilege to introduce Miss Ren- Sandy Feranda and Miss Randy Basile. Uh, Sandy is our Teacher of the Year. Sandy has been with us for fifteen years. Uh, Sandy is a graduate of William Mason. Her children attend William Mason Valley View. Uh, but her children attend William Mason currently, and she's a member of the PTA. Sandy came to me fifteen years ago, and she worked with Mark Danilak at the time. He came to me and he said, "Oh, my God, she's so smart." And it's so true. Uh, she works in her fifth grade right now, but she's been in research rooms, she's been ICR. Uh, we can put Sandy anywhere in the building, and she will excel. She has a passion for teaching math, but she also has a passion for learning. Uh, she's duly certified. She's also a reading specialist. Um, she has a technology certificate. And, um, not too long ago, she was one of my, uh, principal's interns. So, I'm trying to kick her out the door, um, or kick her up, either way, um, but she's an incredible, uh, deserving, uh, Teacher of the Year. Miss Randy Basile has been with us, uh, for twelve years, and, but she's been in education twenty-one years. Uh, equally exemplary, she is a duly cert- she's certified in art, um, elementary, pre-K. She asked me, "Please don't put me in pre-K." But she's so creative, and she, she goes out of her way as a paraprofessional to build trusting relationships with her students. They look out for her on the playground, in the lunchroom, and in the classroom. And then, there isn't a day that goes by that they don't lean on her. And I want to thank them because they have inspired me to be, um, more compassionate, more involved with students, and, um, just know how to work the room so the kids get the best benefit of their education. So, I wanna congratulate these wonderful professionals, and they're well-deserved. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, first of all, congratulations to all the recipients and to our Eagle Scout. Um, our Educational Services Professional, uh, Ms. Karen Backer cannot be here tonight, but we wanna recognize her as well. Our Teacher of the Year is Miss Maria Hayburn, who has been with us for quite some time. She teaches movement in our Physical Education Department. Um, one quick note about this year's voting. Every year, we put out the votes and the committee meets. Um, no one in the eight years I've been here received as many votes as Maria did this year, which was a recognition of her colleagues. So, congratulations to you, Maria.
Hello, everyone. Um, again, Mr. Stanford apologizes for not being able to attend. He had an unexpected personal matter. Um, but I am thrilled on his behalf to introduce the three high school educators of the year. But first and foremost, I would like to recognize everybody who's been acknowledged tonight. Um, our first honoree is Mr. Christopher Connolly. He's the Princeton University Distinguished Secondary School Teacher of the Year. That was mouthful. Um, he started in two thousand eighteen. His first career was actually at Prudential. He was there for thirty-three years. Um, took his expertise and joined our department. Um, he graduated from Seton Hall with a Bachelor of Science, and then Fordham University with his MP- MBA. Um, it's with great honor and privilege that I recognize Christopher Connolly. Our second person is Educational Service Professional of the Year, Miss Lisa Shapiro. Um, she started in Montville in two thousand seventeen. Uh, she started in first grade in West Orange. Um, and she has been a paraprofessional for over eighteen years. Um, she graduated from the American University in Education, earned a BA plus thirty, and her love of children has led her on this path. Congratulations. Um, last, but certainly not least, Ms. Laura Vera is Teacher of the Year. She started in two thousand eight. Um, started in education in two thousand seven at the Windsor School in West Milford. She graduated with Montclair State with a Bachelor of Science in two thousand seven. She actually started her teaching career as a TA and has never left. Uh, congratulations to all three folks.
We're gonna do, uh, all the recipients picture, and then you're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the board meeting, but if you wanna leave, we understand too.
I don't know, but they're fired. They don't have a job anymore.
Yeah, I mean, you could go, 'cause it's just, uh, it's Kattine and then, um, the public session.
Okay, we're gonna continue on with the meeting. Hi, folks. Okay, uh, Kattine, a business minister's report, please?
No report. However, just to bring it to everyone's attention, the auditors will be here on February fourth to do the presentation of the audit.
Thank you. Okay, so there's a lot of good news in the, anything else, by the way, Tom, you haven't, no other? Okay. So, I encourage people to read the good news in our agenda. Happy things at our schools. Uh, Section G, Committee Reports, uh, Facilities and Finance, Karen?
Uh, thank you, David. Uh, the committee met right before tonight's meeting. We went over the annual comprehensive financial report for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. And as, uh, Ms. Kattine said, the auditors will be here, uh, the first meeting, um, in February. What she left out was that the auditors have once again, in many years, um, given Montville Township a clean report without any findings, and that's a direct credit to Mrs., um, to, to Kattine and, and her business office staff. So, thank you for that, and I'm sure we'll hear more about that from the auditors.
And how many years would that be now? Two, two years. So, you're, you're on a streak. You, you're on a streak. You got two go. Okay, keep on. Okay, good.
Uh, we also talked about the, uh, school district's financial position going into twenty-four, twenty-five. We talked about construction projects that are current and those that are projected over a three-to-five-year plan. We did touch on, uh, the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six elementary enrollment, and we will hear more about that at the second meeting in February. Um, and then, moving into the budget, once again, for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Lovely. Okay, curriculum, Michelle?
No report.
Okay, uh, John, policy?
No report.
Communications, Joe?
No report.
Christine, Safety and Security?
No report.
New Jersey School Board's Delegate Liaison, Karen?
Sorry.
Don't go anywhere.
So, I really had, uh, the, the thrill of a lifetime, and I don't say that lightly. I was able to attend Governor Murphy's State of the State Address, and, um, it was just a wonderful reminder of how great our democracy is and how great our country is to watch our state representatives in action, and I was able to sit in on a Senate section, uh, session before the State of the State. Um, and just, you know, I, I, I'm very reverent of, uh, of things governmental, and it was just a very, very nice, uh, uh, event, and one that I won't forget. just a very, very nice, uh, uh, event, and one that I won't forget. Um, and that's it. Unfortunately, I was, because I was at the State of the State, I did miss the Chinese Honor Society, as well as Cedar Hill's Home and School Meeting.
And when do we expect to hear the budget and state aid?
Uh, that'll come out around the Budget Address, uh, February 25th.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Morris County School Board Association, Mike Rappaport?
No report.
Okay. Uh, Morris County Educational Services, Joe?
We met on January 8th. We approved the 2025, 2026 rates for services, and our next meeting will be on February 12th.
And drug awareness?
Uh, we met on the 9th, uh, just discussed the, uh, potential programs, ideas for the spring for community programs.
Okay. John, Athletic Boosters?
Nope.
No report.
Okay. Uh, Liaisons, Cedar Hill. Karen, you said you missed?
Uh, yeah, I wasn't able to, uh, attend that meeting, but I did attend Antonio Gastitis' Court, uh, Eagle Court of Honor, and it always amazes me the amount of work that goes into becoming an Eagle Scout, and I, I like to say it's a life's work, even though the youngster, boy or girl now, uh, is, you know, 16, 17 years old, and the, uh, a number of badges they have to acquire, and each, each badge building on leadership, and, uh, I'm always proud of Eagle Scouts. My son is one, so I'm very proud of him.
And, and we're inviting him and his family back on the 4th to correct that error.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, he had a very nice project at Woodmont. Okay, Christine, Hildale?
Yes, so, um, they had a Zoom meeting, and I have to tell you, there was about 26 parents on the Zoom, and I think it's phenomenal, because I've been to meetings where there wasn't a Zoom, there's only a handful of parents, so I, I just think it's such a great tool to get parents involved, um, for sure. Um, so they have a lot of great things going on, um, they have chart wells, and they're going to survey the parents to see what foods the kids like, what they don't like, what to add, um, which is really great. They want parent, um, participation in that. Um, our, us, our Board of Education paid for new swings for the kids, and they love them. They're working on an outdoor garden. Um, in the springtime, they'll begin working. They're adding grass above the fields, and they're gonna be adding new bases and make it more, uh, I guess, child-friendly. They're calling a certain area the Husky Hangout. Uh, there will be seating for up to 30 students outdoors. Um, there's gonna be benches, they're doing a lot of small fundraisers at school, and currently, they're collecting a wish list from the teachers.
Yeah, I saw that area. It's back behind the building. Uh, they cleared out some woods, they brushed from underneath the woods. It looks very nice. It's gonna be a good place to hang out, especially on warm days.
I know. All the, all the schools are doing outdoor learning areas, which I think everyone needs to be outdoors, so I think that's great.
Outdoors is good. Caitlin, Valley View?
Um, okay, so they also had a Zoom meeting. Couple highlights are, uh, they raised $40,000 from the Tricky Tray and are deciding what to do with that money, considering shading the outdoor classroom so it can get more use in the hot months. There's a dine to donate this Thursday, Buffalo Wild Wings, if anybody's looking for an excuse not to cook. And Friday, they're having a Rockness Rock Show, um, to promote music, education, and movement. And the new playground is finally complete, and working on a plaque that will be placed there thanking the donors, which includes the Board of Ed. And we also got to thank Joe Daughtry for all of his service to Valley View over the years, um, and for his time spent as the liaison.
Yeah, I saw the playground. It's very nice. You did a good job. You guys did a good job there. Uh, John, William Mason?
Uh, no report.
Okay. Lazar? Uh, Joe, you have anything for?
No.
No. Didn't think so. High school, Mike Rappaport?
Uh, the PTC meeting was January 13th. Unfortunately, mo- all my bullet points were already talked about. They talked about the senior, uh, seniors that are ordering their caps and gowns, um, they talked about the educator, uh, Educator of the Year, Teacher of the Year, and the midterms coming up, uh, the end of this week and, and next week, so, oh, that was previously discussed. The next meeting is March 10th.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this is our time for the first public participation, participation section. If there's anyone who would like to say anything about our agenda? I guess not. Okay, let's move on to consent resolutions. Items I through N. Motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Second? I need a second? Thank you. Okay, any questions on the minutes? No. Section J, gifts. Section K, Facilities Finance. Okay. Uh, Section L, Personnel?
Yes, two quick amendments. Uh, they're correcting the hard copy, if you have that in front of you, but just want to point out, L31, um, the salary should be 3.782 and 72 cents. Uh, that's for our current, uh, salary. And then on page 10, uh, number 23, uh, it should be MA Step 4.
Okay, thank you. Section M, Curriculum. Any questions? Hearing none. Section N, nothing. Roll call vote, please?
Mr. Daughtry?
Yes, abstain on K1, check 10102.
Mr. Rappaport?
Yes.
Dr. Cordellino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fano?
Yes.
Mr. Petrazino?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Yes.
Dr. Modrak?
Yes.
Okay, uh, there is no close session announcement. Old business, general board comments, new business from the board?
Uh, just to mention, I did attend David Johnson's memorial. Um, David Johnson was a lot, uh, more than 30-year member of our police force. He was retired, but he's also Michael Johnson's dad. Michael served, uh, very honorably as a Board of Education member another, uh, number of years ago, and, uh, we mourn, mourn the passing of his dad, who contributed a lot to our community.
Thank you. Yeah, um, I attended the Chinese New Year celebration with Caitlin, John, and Mike Palmer. Fantastic, um, production put on by the students, and they had some other, uh, members of the community took part in, uh, showing all the traditions and stuff that they do. It was, uh, pretty amazing to see that, so, I was glad I got to go to it.
Good. Yeah, okay. Uh, moving on then to our second public participation section. For any items at all that you would like to discuss with the board, if there's anyone who would like to speak to the board about any items? Seeing none? Or one person walks away? I will ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So move.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good night, everyone.
That was Scott, wasn't it?
Social friends with her.